I'm Roger Trahan, Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, and I call this May 22nd, 2024 meeting to order, first order of business. Board of Library Trustees post-election welcome, including our new member, and we will end up reorganizing the board. And so first, to my left, Chris Belts, welcome, newest member.
Yay!
And Aaron Van de Steen, re-elected. Thank you, Aaron, for serving. And Doug Bowman.
Yay!
Okay. And it's a good feeling to go uncontested, isn't it?
It's a lot easier, that's for sure.
You worry when you pull papers. Like, great, another uncontested race, and then he pulls papers like three days before they're supposed to be two days.
Right.
I was still confused. I'm like, wait a second. I can't speak.
All right. So while I'm at it, and I know you pulled triple duty, and I'm not gonna jump ahead of myself in the agenda, but right before you walked in, it was like, oh, we need a scribe.
I will do it this last time.
This last time.
And add it to my, and I'm apologizing for the overdue. I was gonna work on it this weekend, and I had a project due for work, so I will just bring it all out.
All right, cool. All right. So I think we may have called in toward like seven or five.
Okay.
And, okay, so I know, so reorganization for Chair and Vice Chair, we don't have, we've never had the role, or at least recently, of Clerk. That's always the paid library staff person. So I know last year, we reorganized in our first meeting after the election, it's, which was in May, and we had spoken about doing so tonight, so I put that on the agenda. And before accepting any motions, has anyone thought of or is willing to serve this coming year as Chair?
Well, I think, yeah, is everyone just gonna be quiet? I think the way we might do it is...
Ask for a motion?
We would, you would ask for nominations.
Okay, all right. All right, all right.
For Chair.
I will open up the floor to nominations for Chair.
Yes. I'd like to nominate Doug Bowman for Chair.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second the nomination.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Doug, are you willing to accept that nomination?
Is this where I like, have a deep conversation? No, of course I am, yes.
All right, great.
Accept the nomination, yes.
All right. And any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
It's not...
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, is it a slate?
I think...
This is, this piece is new to me.
I think it's just a nomination.
Yeah, just a nomination.
Right, because someone else might have a second nomination.
Yep, so you can...
Oh, okay.
Open it up for other nominations.
All right, all right, I'll open up the floor to any other nominations.
Just do whatever you want for it.
I think, I think I'll hold off for now.
Roger, highly recommend it.
Right, yeah. Do I have any other nominations?
Are we doing co-chair too?
We can do that separately.
Okay.
All right, so hearing no other nominations, then, I'll proceed to vote. But not before asking for any discussion on the nomination or the motion that's on the table. All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? To clear the motion carried unanimously.
I guess it's good that I didn't oppose, right?
All right. And so Chair, and do I have a nomination for Vice Chair?
Who's interested?
I can, I can stay on.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I nominate John Briskie for Vice Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any other nominations for Vice? All right, all right. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed to clear the motion carried unanimously? And when we spoke, Doug, are you, I guess the political term is, are you cool with running the rest of the meeting?
I am fine with that, if that's what the group wants to do.
All right, congrats, we'll swap seats.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Does that sound good to everybody?
Is everyone okay with that?
Yep. Thank you, Roger, for your service. It was a very difficult year, and you did a fantastic job just keeping a straight face the whole time.
Thank you so much. It was great to serve, and, but it's been a long year, but it's been great working with everyone, and we'll swap seats now, and, you know, let Doug share the meeting. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Roger.
Congrats, John.
Thank you.
We'll make you run at least one of these meetings, John.
That's right. I don't know, we'll see.
I think I told you, John, I never miss a meeting.
Yeah. You kept your word.
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate thanks to Roger for doing the Chair this past year. It's definitely been a little bit of an atypical year for the board, with some various things going on, so thank you for that. You worked very hard and did a lot of off-hours, including the recent search for the new library director. And same thing with John, right? You did a lot of work as Vice Chair?
No, not really. I think Roger did most of the work.
I think I was, I was, I was a ball hog. I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Well, I'll have to make sure that you do more work.
Yeah.
Great. And welcome to Chris. Yep, excited to have you onboard. So just moving on to the second agenda item, and Roger, obviously speak up if there's something that I missed on this month's agenda. So the second thing is just announcement of the new Director. As everyone, I think, knows, Tom O'Connell signed contract for Library Director, so we're very excited to have Tom joining us. He comes from the Springfield Library, and he's actually working on moving to the area too, which is awesome. So with that, he's gonna be starting June 3rd, which I guess, is that actually the Tuesday after Memorial Day?
No, no. No, it's the week after. It's the Monday.
It's a Monday.
Oh, okay.
The week after Memorial Day.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's right, okay. So it's the Monday, yeah, okay, next Monday. So we have to, as a board, I presume we should come up with some type of statement, press release, announcement? I'm assuming the town's not coming up with anything like that?
No, no, excuse me, as he's, as he's reporting to us, we would, we would come up with that. And I sort of did the sort of informal on social media when I signed, when we co-signed the contract in front of the Jerome Wheelock statue, so...
Nice touch. Yeah, nice touch.
Did you tell Tom ahead of time?
Yeah, yeah, and I told him the history of Jerome Wheelock and the library, and he thought it was the coolest idea, so, yeah. But, so I guess a press release, so what we hadn't talked about is, when we were, when the board had given us the okay to negotiate the contract, we really hadn't thought of moving forward with, together, doing the press release. And so I waited till this meeting to, for the board to determine what, what content and when, and such, and maybe it might, for the sake of time, maybe we could agree that maybe one of us could, could roll with that versus trying to hash out wording of a press release here, that's typically, and maybe unnecessarily take up too much time, and I, I trust any one of us to, to roll with that.
Yep, that's what I would suggest too, is having somebody, if anyone volunteers. I mean, certainly like that social media post was a lot of good content, but I don't know if you'd be willing to work on the press release, or is anybody else willing to do that?
We should consider that the community advocate reached out, right?
Actually, that's right, yeah, just FYI, someone, if you saw that email, the community advocate was kind of asking that question.
And I apologize for not having reached out to them. Thank you for that email and that reminder.
Yeah. So if we're doing a press release, would that be something that we would write and just hand, hand to them?
I think so, yeah, we would, we would put something together and...
Dana's the expert on press releases.
Yeah, I would love, I would love for Dana to write it instead of AI to write a press release for a new Director.
Maybe I can do it. Do we have any photographs of him?
Yes.
Can I get one? Can I talk to him?
Uh-oh.
What's, when do you all want this done? He's not...
Well, he starts June 3rd, so...
Yeah, so I would think sometime next week would be great, if we could get it out next week.
There's a holiday thing happening for his plan, but I'm going to wait.
Yeah, Monday's a holiday.
Oh, next week.
Yep. And I don't know what is entailed with the press release, besides writing it and sending it to the advocate, because they asked, I mean, we obviously would post it on...
I would send it to a lot of publications. I have some contacts.
Okay.
But what about the website, though?
I would send it to the Grafton News. I mean, we can talk to her, they're still out there.
Yeah, certainly the website.
And then any business papers, they'll run it.
Okay.
And then have our library post it too.
And we can also try to see, it depends what you want to do, do you want it, do we want them to write an article about him? I mean, you have to decide what your objective is.
I mean, certainly if somebody wants to write an article about him, and maybe it would be better if they would interview him first and talk to him, and that would be more...
No, 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 no. If you want like a media person to interview him and they write the article.
No. In advance of our press release.
No, we send them a press release, but what's our objective? Do we say, hey, do you want to, we have this, you know, we, you know, we have a new library Director, this is his name, you know, Tom O'Connell, do you want, we just have to decide what we want. It might be good because, you know, we haven't had much publicity about anything really, and it is good, it is big news. The community advocate focuses a lot on libraries as far as like happenings in municipal municipalities. I mean, they wrote about the Westborough librarian that's leaving, they had a big article about her, and talked all about what she used to do and her presence in the community, so...
Yep.
They like, they like to focus, and it's a positive art, positive, so, and they haven't really focused on Grafton that much, except the Smallstones Festival of the Arts, they did write like three or four articles and came to visit and took pictures, so they were much more, it was really good to have Graft, you know, have Grafton and the community advocate.
Yeah, okay. Carrie, I know you had a comment.
So I think that sounds fantastic, so I think, I think a general press release to let them know, and then maybe like just tell them that we would love for them to come and interview Tom after he's settled in, and then, could maybe that be a little bit, like, you know, because he's, you know, he's got a lot of, you know...
Maybe we could, maybe what could get them to do is publish something now and then come back and do something.
Yeah, yeah, like after he's been here a couple months.
That would help us, because maybe we'll have some good news in another two months. We could plan that, around that.
Okay.
So...
And then, Aaron, did you have a comment?
I was just gonna defer to Dana, I mean, really, whatever you think is best, that's what I feel, I have no opinion otherwise.
I'll work on it. I could ask Tom to send me something too.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know, he, do we have his resume?
Oh, yeah, we have all of that. I can get...
I could look at his resume, I think I must have it.
So would you and Roger be willing to put that together?
Yeah, we could put that together.
I can put it together, yeah.
All right, okay, all right. And then if you want me to run it by me...
Yeah, and I could, I would, I think Tom should look at it too.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Chair.
Like, you're so fabulous at, you know, those types of things, so I think it'll be really, really nice.
I'll do it, it's just I have a lot of my play right now.
Yep, okay. Well, then, just, just...
Well, he's not coming to like, we could, I'll reach out, well, you sent something about the community advocate, I'll reach out to them. Was it Maureen Sullivan, or was it, okay, I know her. She used to cover Grafton.
The other, the other place that is a great...
Oh, the Blackstone Valley?
Way to get information out. That's not what I was thinking, but Libraries in the News, through MBLC, they sent out that newsletter.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
I don't know how we can get that out, but maybe if they would even do that.
I can find out. What was the name of that? I'll look it up.
Libraries in the News.
Okay, but what, do you know what?
The MBLC newsletter.
Okay, I'll talk to somebody there.
Actually, the person who used to kind of head that up has left the organization, so I can get the name.
Okay, so then Dana and Roger can put together the actual press release?
I think just Dana.
Dana, but if you don't mind, if, I mean, I'm always a set of eyes to look over something. If you...
Well, yeah, I would write it, and then I would also have Tom look at it, because it's about him.
Yep.
I think that's kind of, that's a nice gesture.
So I do have one question, though, about the press release, and maybe I didn't get particular on the terminology in the agenda that I created. I informally did that social media post, but I guess in the press release, there probably should be an official Board of Library Trustees community information release, right? Like, on the website, or is that, how is that separate?
Well, I was, I was just imagining that, or envisioning that what the press release that we write would go out on our website, maybe the town website.
Oh, okay, all right.
I think I should contact somebody there and ask them.
Yeah, and I don't remember...
I don't know what letterhead they'd want it out. I mean, usually what I would do is write, I'd write a release, and then, you know, I write, I write different emails and send them to people, and then I follow up to make sure they get them and ask them.
But the letterhead would be the Board of Library Trustees, it would be from us.
Do we have that?
I think it's just more of the signature, right, isn't it, for us? I mean, it would be the Town of Grafton letterhead, I guess, but it would be signed by the Board of Library.
I have the Word version of our agenda, in other words, if you look at our agenda, the piece is this Town of Grafton, and then, and then anything above the words "regular meeting," you could, I could just delete and send you the Word version of just that header.
Should I just ask somebody at the, in the, somebody in the...
Well, if he has the Word document, that's probably the same.
No, I have a Word document, I could send, I'll simply send it to you.
Okay.
I'll delete everything, and then it'll, I'll just...
And that's their letterhead, then?
Yeah, it's the Town of Grafton, but then it's, it has the...
The Board of Library Trustees heading.
And then, the Friends actually included a welcome in, a welcome for the new Director in their newsletter, too.
Yep. So then the second piece after the press release, I would suggest, I mean, as a board, we need to come up with their onboarding process. Ultimately, we have to define the goals for the Library Director. Is that, do we agree that that would be appropriate for some small subcommittee to start working on that? Right, we need to come up with a, an onboarding plan, you know, I don't think it needs to be super detailed, but something that says, you know, meeting with the staff, the staff meeting, I'm sorry, the staff, a staff meeting, you know, we want to have the ability for Tom to reach out, I guess, most likely to me as the Chair, you know, to meet with him weekly, if we have any goals for him about, you know, meeting with the Town Administrator for the budget, you know, meeting with MBLC for all the Director stuff roles.
There was also a...
Sort of like a welcome to him, in a sense.
Well, I'm thinking more of a function, a list of stuff that he knows what to do on Week 1, Week 2, Week 3.
Do we have that? Is that part of the job description?
No, but there, well, there's a punch list of items that I had, and I think I may have obtained it from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, MBLC, that acronym, another acronym, MBLC website, that is like a punch list for a new Director.
Right, I've seen that.
And I think, I know what you're talking about, Doug, I just wonder how you approach it, that's all. Because I think he's probably gonna know what to do, but maybe we can give him suggestions and let him know what our expectations are, because he should know that.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I was thinking at it to be a pretty high level, right?
Yeah.
You know, meet with staff, and meet with MBLC, he's gonna be doing that anyways.
Right off the bat, he's gonna be doing that, but, yeah.
Certainly from a goal perspective, that's something that we're gonna have to come up with, but I think that's gonna be a month or two, right? That's gonna take a while for us to come up with some goals.
And I, along those lines, I took the liberty to forward him the email that we all received that was Mary Laurie, our Town Accountant's, the punch list for FY '24 year-end bills and everything like that in the process. I forwarded it to him, and he appreciated that, because he, I would rather have him see it heading in during the, had, immediately, versus finding himself all of a sudden realizing, okay, there's a certain process, and rushing right before the end of the fiscal year, so...
And then Carrie, honey.
Yeah, so I guess on the actual day, so will you be meeting him at the library, like that Monday, or if you're not available to do that, should another member of the board do that, just to kind of, you know, welcome him, and, you know, and I, I think it would be nice to do some kind of, you know, some kind of like little, I don't know, bagels or something, like some, sometimes during the week, or, you know, for the...
So along those lines, if I may, he had asked me about what do I do on my first day, because this is sort of, this is sort of team effort of HR doing all the background check and all the, the benefits piece, but we're his boss, but he's, he's also Department Head, and so he'll be going to the Department Head meeting, so this is sort of shared welcome. So he'd asked, what do I do on my first day? Do I, do I go to Town Hall and meet with the benefits person, or do I show up at the library? And I really don't have an answer. This is a first for me.
It's a first for us in a long time, at least.
Yeah.
Is he concerned about his benefits, you mean?
No, 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 in other words, what do I, who do I, where do I report my first day, Town Hall or the library?
I think probably Town Hall, because I'm sure, like, like whenever you start a new job, like you onboarding, you have to fill out your W-2 and, you know, all that information, right?
Should we find that out?
I think I'll, I can reach out to William and just ask him for that first day process.
Find out, because he probably needs to do that right off, if he hasn't already done that.
And then I think we also need to, once we find out, we need to let our libraries, librarians know what the plan is, so that they're not like waiting around for him, you know, on that Monday, saying like, where is he, you know?
And then the other thing I...
Maybe we need to come up with a plan based upon what William tells us.
Yeah.
Will there's somebody, somebody from the Library Trustees be able to say hello to him too?
I can do it, I can, I can make time available.
And then... Just like a rough, rough agenda, you know, like from 8:00 to 10:00, he'll be at the Municipal Center, you know, 10:30 Doug will stop in, say hello, and, you know, and then 11 o'clock, or whatever.
Yeah, like whatever, yeah, I'm flexible, actually.
Does anybody know when they usually had staff meetings? What would, what would the rest of the library be doing on that day? Because then maybe if they're having any department meetings, he could be on them, I don't know.
I think the department meetings are Wednesday at 1:00.
Okay.
That's the Town, you're talking about the Town one?
The Library Staff meeting, I think, is Wednesdays at 1:00. And then the other thing is, he had reached out to me and asked, he wanted to prepare some type of, almost like self-welcome, but he, and speaking with some of the library staff, and I could lend them, I have an ESAL, I don't know if they do, but he was willing to create a sort of, like a bio type of thing.
Who am I?
Like, who am I?
Yeah, a trifold or something?
Or, and I, I was able to, and I'll lend, I'll lend my ESAL to the library, and maybe put that in the entrance, so that when people come in, they know we have a new Library Director, and here's, here's who he is. And he was willing to sort of create that, you know, piece of work.
Do all the library, does everybody that works in the library know that he's coming and who his name is?
Yes, I think, I believe so, yeah. So why don't I talk to William? I'll find out what kind of HR-related activities he needs to do, and presumably that'll be first, and then I'll talk to a couple of the, the library staff, because I agree, I think the first thing he should do is kind of like, they should all just get together in the hallway and say hi type thing, and then we can work...
And they should have a copy of the agenda.
Yeah.
Or maybe somewhere like in the, whatever rooms we have available, right? The large print room or the, the Historian?
Well, we will be open, so...
At 9:00.
At 9:00, so assuming it's after 9:00.
Well, that's our new hour, it's our year 9:00.
Yep.
So, so, so does anybody think that they're gonna go Monday, other than Doug, and possibly myself, because I know, so one of the things that we always have to be careful of is if there's more, if there's four of us, it's considered a quorum, so we have to post, post as a, as a meeting. So does, I guess, do we have any concerns that that first day, that we'll be overrunning him after?
Yeah, I mean, who is available on that Tuesday, or Monday?
I could come later in the day to say hello to him, but I'm probably, I probably would be busy until like 3:00, I think, I'm guessing.
Well, I would just like to, you brought up a great point, and I don't want to belabor this conversation, but it would be foolish to think that we can't all be in the same place at the same time.
I think, I think, aren't we allowed to do it if we're not, if we're specific?
Yeah, as long as you don't talk about library business.
This would be pretty much library business, so...
Yeah, yeah, it would be, anything we talk about this library business could be a deliberation, but we can also, we can, we can simply, we can, similar to National Night Out, or, or a Big Truck Day, or whatever, or a Town Meeting, have something where we post that the Board of Library Trustees may be in quorum, onsite, welcoming the new Director.
Yep.
And then that covers us.
Okay, that's good.
And then the Minutes could simply say that if that occurred, if that quorum occurred or not.
Okay, that sounds good.
I think that sounds good.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention, the timing actually works out quite nicely, and if everybody's okay, I was gonna reach out to Tom. The Friends of the Grafton Public Library are having their annual meeting on Friday, so, so it would be wonderful, hopefully he's gonna be available, so I certainly invite him and his family to join, and of course, you know, would love to have, you know, the trustees as well, so it would be 6:30, it's gonna be in the Historic Reading Room.
Yep.
And, and that, I think we need to post too, right, Doug, like, because if we, if we have four more trustees, it is obviously, you know, library-related, and we wouldn't expect Tom to do anything other than really say hello, if, I wouldn't expect him to do a presentation, but it would be great if he's able to do it.
Yep, I agree.
Could meet people, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on, do we want to have, I think the final piece for the new Director would be some type of more formal reception? Like, do we want to have some kind of thing, or should we just wait maybe a couple months and do more of a...
Like a community-wide reception?
Yeah.
I think that would be an excellent idea, I just, I'm not sure, could the timing happen when other things are completed?
That's what I'm wondering, like, either do it right at the, like in this, in the fall, like in September, at the end of the summer, or do it at the, you know, early summer?
The only thing is, I think, I think we need to, I think we need to, to reach out before then, don't you think? Because it's been a, there's been some, you know, we haven't had a Library Director for a while, so it might make a lot more, it could be reassuring to a lot of people if they get to meet him and know him.
The irony is that we may have, well, no, we may have the Community Room still offline.
Right.
We know that, that's, well, that's what, yeah.
That would be the irony.
Well, the, so maybe we, could we do something outside or something? That would be great, but the Community Room could be made available, though, I mean, it's...
That's true. That would be the irony.
Well, the-
So maybe we, could we do something outside or something?
That would be great, but the community room could be made available though, I mean, it's-
That's true.
Um, they actually, the library staff are, um, wonderful about, um, you know, you letting the friends know that if, um, you know, for, for like their book sale, they would clear the room for them, so I'm sure they would do it for them.
I mean, there's also the historic reading room.
Historic reading room's beautiful.
Yeah.
Not too many people, I mean, I don't know, it would be good for people to see it.
I would prefer to have something.
Figure out the timing, that's all.
Do you think we should, need to do it before our next board meeting?
No, but I, I think we should do it some, I would do it sooner than later, not, maybe not our next board meeting, but-
But so maybe we should put that on the agenda for the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Or maybe talk about it beforehand.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I think it's kind of nice for us to be proactive, we don't want people saying, oh, we, you know, we don't want people's, you know, not having the chance to meet him and being, you know, being-
So, yeah, I mean, our next board meeting's not till the end of June, so in reality, then that means the reception would be in July sometime, which is probably not the best time, early July.
So maybe we should think about it, maybe we should have a subcommittee meet.
Well.
Or maybe we can just decide here and then.
Let's see what Aaron says.
Okay. Um, I would prefer something more informal, right? And I really liked the event, uh, when we, um, thanked, uh, Marilyn, uh, I forget her last name.
Will Cox.
Will Cox. Um, she had, uh, a few hours where she, where you could go in and sit and say hello and thank her for her service. I would love it if we could do something with the director where, you know, he's just in a place, making himself available to the public, where people can come in and we publicize it, and they can come in and, and talk to him about the library.
I think that's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
Can we, can you remind me, was that during the day, that was during the day, right?
It was.
It was like midday or something?
Was it a Friday? I think it was a Friday.
Yeah, P, I, we think we had to leave work for, for something like that, but, you know. I thought that was really nice.
So should we try to pick a date tonight?
Yeah, what time is the library open on Fridays?
They're open till six.
Nine to six?
Yeah, nine to six. Um, now, we have to keep-
Cause if you wanna get anybody that's working, they would come a little bit later.
So the other, so, so on June eighth, we have the Friends at six thirty. Um, the following week is the last week of school for, last week of school for the Grafton Public Schools, so Thursday, June thirteenth is the last day. So I think a lot of people probably are gonna be leaving, or, you know, I don't know if that Friday, not sure if that's good or bad, you know, for people.
What date was that again?
J, Thursday, June thirteenth is the last day for Grafton Public Schools.
Is it, is it too much to say we'll do it after, like a month after, so like basically after our next meeting? I'm, I don't think we're ready to just like thrust Tom into something he doesn't even know about.
Yeah, I think we should talk to him to, and also make sure, you know, his availability.
July was a great time.
Right about, what about the twenty-eighth, which is only two days after our next meeting?
Why does, why does July, um?
Cause people are away during the summer.
Yeah, still a lot of people use the library during the summer, summer reading, I mean, people use the library more than-
You know what we could do, if we do it and it's really successful, we could do it again in the fall and just say, if you missed it, please come and see our li, our li, our new library director, so that we get everybody.
Yeah, kind of welcome back, yeah.
So then maybe something like July twelfth, yep.
I don't know.
Okay, I think it's good to talk to him first.
Okay, so why don't we-
You don't wanna do it the end of June, you think it's too soon?
I think June twenty-eighth sounds good if, if it, that works for him.
Well, are, are, is the town doing anything, um, around the Fourth of July?
Usually they have, you know, the bean stand.
The thing on the common, yeah.
You know, and something like that where people are already in the common to begin with. You know, if the lib, if we can coordinate that with the library being open at some point, people using the bathrooms, whatnot. Um, I don't know, I think it's just, it's a, it's kind of impromptu, informal, like you might even get more people to use the library if he's there to welcome them in. You know, that was one of the things that the previous director always said is like, we're gonna get you one way or the other, what other, because you're coming to use the bathrooms, cause you're doing something in the common, but you know, so like, I think it would be a good outreach, um, opportunity for, to, for Tom.
So, but the, the library wouldn't be open on, for the actual Fourth of July, but, um, but sometimes they do the concert like the Wednesday before, so I'm not, not sure, but it falls on a Thursday, the Fourth of July this year.
So why don't we, why don't we, um, cause we wanna, obviously wanna talk to Tom too and make sure it works out with his schedule, so why don't we get him on boarded, start at that beginning of June, then we'll just start talking about dates, if, yeah, would you bring that up, uh, with, with Tom then?
I would.
Then we can discuss it on the next agenda.
I think end of June would be good, myself.
Yeah, I thi, I think June twenty-eighth would be great, just because it's before like the summer kicks in and people are coming and going, but it's also very soon after our next meeting, but I think maybe that's what we should target, June twenty-eighth.
It can also be, um, when, it's supposed to be casual, right, not real official.
Correct, that's what I was envisioning.
For people to feel welcome to come in.
Yep. Okay.
We also need enough time to publicize it.
Well, I think we put it on all our social media, maybe get an article, get something printed somewhere. And maybe that, that town could put it on their website, right? We have all those gra, all those Grafton websites.
LED boards.
Who, what is?
I mean, ideally it would end, actually end up being in the press release, right?
That's what, that's exactly what I was gonna say. So Dana, when you talk to Tom, if the, if the June twentieth is good for him, why don't we just pu, pu, put it in the press release so they come meet our new director?
Yep.
That might be a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, good.
So moving on from that, um, the next big discussion is the children's room rug. Um, so just for brief background information, right, um, you know, the, um, the library was flooded la, late last, actually it wasn't late last year, it was last August.
It was August eighteenth.
Yeah.
You beat me because of the time, Chuck.
And as part of the reme, remediation and repairs, they, um, you know, ordered carpet, they tore out the old carpet, they started installing new carpet. They installed new carpet in the community room, which was completed, it's like a gray, gray tone. They, um, started working on the children's room with the carpet, um, and it was not quick enough, but, uh, shortly after they got progress, they discovered that they were installing the carpet incorrectly. So it's this pattern carpet that is in a four by, it's supposed to be installed in a four by four grid, and they just basically put down the squares everywhere.
So actually even above that, um, apparently it wasn't ordered properly.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. So when, in order to, to get the four by four grid, you were supposed to order it specifically saying, we want it installed in a four by four grid, so that's how they package it and deliver it, that was not done. I guess, long story shorter, um, the town, and this has all been managed by the town administrator's office. Um, they have, uh, worked it out with the, um, insurance company, that the insurance company is willing to pay to start over. They basically have to reorder the carpet, install it as it was originally, um, installed, um, but it's gonna take ten to twelve weeks. And that's based on what we've known historically, it might actually take longer than ten to twelve weeks. So this group needs to decide, do we want to just leave it as it is? Uh, they'll finish it up, we can open the, uh, children's room much quicker, or do we have them start over with the correct design?
Well, they'll, they'll correct, the, there's the things that were not installed correctly, so they'll correct.
Well, they'll, they'll lay out the pattern correctly, and there were some other issues with corners and things peeling up, obviously they would correct for that.
They, when, they, uh, so I actually met with our, uh, head of children's, uh, library services, um, Sarah Bannister, and she told me when, um, she talked to them, they don't have enough, um, to act, because it wasn't ordered in the four by four, and they already started the installation, they spent quite some time trying to see if they could figure out how to do the pattern. I said, we could make it a giant jigsaw puzzle and try to figure out how to leave the pieces, but, um, but, um, they would try as much as possible to follow the pattern, but because so much was already installed, they don't have, that it wasn't delivered with the pattern, um, it would not be in the same, you know, the same arranged pattern that was done before. Um, they do offer, with this carpet, you can order it two ways, you can order it as just random, or you can order it in the pattern, it was not ordered in the pattern. So there might be enough squares, and I, I would will, I would be willing to try to help place things, you know, to figure out, but the, the, the team, the professional team that looked at it, didn't think that that was really feasible because so much had already been put down.
Right, so I think a, as a board, we need to decide if we're willing to delay the opening by ten to twelve weeks, so they can go through that whole process, get the right tiles in place, and then actually do the installation.
Yep.
So I'll let Aaron go first.
I would just, I just, I, I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure that everybody here has seen the way it looks.
That's what, that's what I'm gonna do next.
And I don't know if they know, if like Chris, I don't know if we know the background of what happened when the carpet was originally laid down, um, how there was, said, compute, community members didn't like it because it was so j, jolting, and that we were at one point gonna have to do some kind of, um, I don't know what you call them, like, um, long, long, we're gonna have to, I don't-
Runners or something.
Like runners, of another color, and then what happened is, once everything got put, everything in place, then it was, it kind of resolved itself, that it didn't really, they thought it would be startling to anybody that has any, any special needs.
But has them, so has everybody in this group seen the before and after, except maybe Chris?
Yeah, I have not.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think, uh, Aaron wished to speak.
I have it here.
Oh, okay.
I just showed it to him.
Oh, okay.
I, I think it's-
Did you have other comments, Aaron?
Well, I would like to start the discussion that we're here to make, uh, the decision that we're here to make, cause we have to make a decision.
Right, yep.
So, um, this is, this is a really tough decision, and, uh, and I know, I don't think anybody took this lightly, right? And so I simply polled, polled my family, you know, I said, what do you think? He, here, here's the, here's the, um, here's the problem. And, you know, my son said very simply, he's like, it needs to be done right, you know, and I said, that's a really great insight. And I wasn't really convinced yet, but I went and took a look. And if you go into the teen room, I was with, uh, Debbie, and if you really look at this pattern and the ways it's supposed, that's done properly, it's phenomenal, it's fantastic, the, the geometry and the way that they put them together, it looks so fantastic. Um, and it really stinks that the community room, you know, is kind of a lost cause at this point, but I think,
Yep.
if we have the opportunity, um, you know, I, I hate to, to delay this longer, but I, I would vote to delay it in order to do it properly, seeing that money's on the table, they're gonna pay to get, have it done right. And, um, to your point Doug, I think there was a lot of problems with the rug and the way that they installed it and they were torn up, so.
Yep.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm gonna just go around the, I would think, I think, cause I think everyone's gonna wanna say something, is that right?
Fine.
So I think I'm just gonna go around the list, so I'll let, and Chris, if you wanna speak up, feel free, um, but I'll let Carrie go first.
So I completely hear what you're saying, Aaron, and I, I, I mean, I'm the one, I, I talked to librarians and, you know, called the, um, you emailed the town administrator, because I was so upset that they were installing incorrectly, because it's like, you know, we want, you, we want it to be right.
That was a great catch.
Um, well, it was our, you know, our librarians are the ones that, that noticed it and, and just alerted me, so I, I was just the messenger, but, um, so, I, I want it done right, but the trade-off is that we're gonna lose the children's room for the entire summer. And it's been so hard on the entire community not to have it available, um, so hard on our staff. Um, I, I would, you know, I would, I would ideally like it to be installed correctly. I would be willing to try to help line up the patterns and do the four by four squares and make it a giant jigsaw puzzle to make it right. Um, the, the installation company would pull up any squares that were cut wrong, were not lined up properly, is my understanding. So, um, so I, m, my vote would be to, to do the best job we can, can with a, a, a good, you know, another team to do the installation, cause the team that did it was, was not qualified. And the, and make it, make the pattern as good as we possibly can in those areas that it's visible especially.
Okay. Um, I have a question for Roger first, before, um, do we know if there's a third option? Like, do we know if we could, sorry, let me just finish my sentence. Can we put it back together the way it is now, right? Get all the, get the, get the room open for a period of time, order the new carpet, you know, let's just say it's three months out, and then in three months, close it down for a couple of weeks. Did they offer that option?
I, I think the answer is no, and, and one of the things, uh, up until today, I was, I would have been totally on board, Carrie, with your idea, until I, it was expressed to me a, again, um, you know, by, by, uh, Sarah and others, that the glue that was laid down wasn't, we're gonna glue this area and put a square down. They, they spackled glue over a huge area, by the time they got to these pieces, this was already drying. And so it's sort of like licking a postage stamp and waiting a few minutes and trying to fix it to the envelope. And then, and, and so what happened is, is that, similar to when we initially thought that, um, these, or the original rug that was there, that certain pieces weren't damaged by water, until we simply waved and they started popping up. Well, that's what's going, that's what was expressed to me today, that, that the rugs would eventually pop up in a similar fashion, because some of them were laid on glue that was starting to dry already.
Okay.
And, and they tried to, um, take up a couple of pieces, and, um, they, there was a, like, picture a sandwich, two pieces of bread with nothing in the middle. And the, 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 the bottom portion-
The backing.
The backing s, stayed stuck, and, and the top part peeled away. So i, i, it seemed just based on my own senses that there'd be no way that you could, uh, reasonably expect that the rugs or a significant number of those pieces could be salvaged and then relayed. So I, so I think what we're dealing with, in my opinion, after looking at it today, is one that is, has less to do with aesthetics than it does function, because eventually, if we, if we, um, it looked like they couldn't be torn, uh, pulled up and relayed, even if we had enough pieces to the puzzle. And number two, um, um, if we just left them there, right? If we, if we just left them there, they would eventually be popping up in, in a similar fashion that we saw with the water damage.
Okay.
But to your point, there, there, um, the circulation is going to be basically zero, and the, even if the programming is there, our, our numbers for, um, the circulation, the kids' books will basically be zero, and then I guess we've been suffering a, um, a significant drop in the adult section, cause when the adults come in with the kids, they invariably go upstairs and take books out.
Yeah, I think, I think the board recognizes that it's been a super challenging, whatever that is, eight months, seven months? Yep. So Dana, do you have any additional comments?
What I was gonna say, well, a couple of thoughts with it, when Aaron was talking about, I did the same thing. I went into the teens room and I saw the difference. That's a very busy pattern, it's not my favorite colors, but it's for teens, and I looked at it and I thought, wow, this looks great. It looked like a real rug, and then when I went and s, went back in the children's room and I could see the difference. So, that's one thing, I just think we can talk about it some more. I wonder if there's a creative way for us to try to help it so we can increase circulation. My concern is that if we don't fix this now, it's just gonna become a problem later on. And I don't, I think we spent all this money on this beautiful library, it's none of our faults that it wasn't done correctly, I think we need to fix it.
Yep. I don't know if we have a, an idea on the lifetime of the carpet, but, I mean, I'm assuming it's at least ten years, right? So, you know, whatever we do, I mean, if you do it right, it should last, you know, a good ten years or longer.
I just wonder if there's another way we can get the books out so the kids can get to them.
Yep. Okay, let me just catch John real quick.
Yeah, so I guess, um, does anyone know, I mean, Roger, maybe you know, do we, can we definitely not kind of use what we have? Cause I think, I'm generally more of a, a form over function, or a function over form, I guess, person, so, I mean, I, if you could tell me that we could have it done right in terms of the durability of the carpet, and have that done in two weeks versus having it done with the correct pattern in, what, tw- twelve to four, fourteen weeks, we'll call it? I would say personally, I'd want to see the children's room open, just for many of the reasons Barry talked about, but, but can we even go forward with what we have?
If we, if we, if, if, uh, through your message here, um, if we, if we do go forward with that, number one, in my, just my opinion, uh, from what I saw today, we, uh, I don't think we could salvage, I, I don't think we would have enough salvageable squares to relay them down.
They'd still need to order new squares.
Yeah, and, and that would still, whether you call it ten squares or a hundred squares or three hundred squares, it would still take ten to twelve weeks. And then the other thing is that, um, the, um, the insurance claim would be closed. In other words, if we are, if we would agree, if we would agree to keep things as they are, right? And then, and then, um, I mean, the insurance claim ha, it, it's my understanding that they're willing to tear everything up, reorder and have them laid down correctly, not try to pick them up and then, you know, put them back down, or if we, if we say, let's leave it as is, then the insurance claim is closed, and then we're on the hook for the expense and, and the time in the future offline to have to redo this on our own dime.
Yeah, certainly, if there's any, you know, corners peeling up, things coming off, then I imagine that's on our own.
They are starting to peel up.
Yeah, it's okay, um, so, would, uh, I'm, sorry.
I'm not doing a great job at managing the conversation, but, okay.
Well, I just wanted to say, so, um, so Roger saw the carpet more recently than I did, I spent quite a bit of time with Sarah, and even at that time when I was with Sarah, like, we were noticing that there's, oh, wait a second, they put this, the, the, um, Stamper thing and ruined this square. This square, these squares were all, you, like, so, like, so even back then, Sarah was advocating for like reopening the room, but, but you, there was, the thought was that they could fix some of the squares. But based upon your latest, you know, update and meeting with Sarah, I am totally convinced that we should replace it, um, because it al, it already had problems, just looking at it, like, things weren't lined up properly, but then there was some damage. But if you're saying that some of the squares that looked okay, we could have ago, were starting to pop up, then we have to just replace it.
Yeah, and they, they cut and, and they don't all match up.
Yeah, they, they shaved some of the sides, we know.
Shaved some of them, they compromised some of the rug, and I think it was Mary is the new, new, uh,
Yeah.
one of the managers, she was here too.
Yep.
Um, and so I, I think function over form, um, I, I think those rug, I think everything that was laid down and the way it was laid down has been compromised. And, and I would go so far as to say that, um, whoever, if we agree that we are going to wait, that whoever lays it down, when they lay it down, that we man, micromanage the heck out of this project.
I would hope from the, I would hope the town would do that.
We need a couple of people to be there.
Right.
We, we need to be there to make sure that they, they start it.
I think we need library personnel.
Right.
Yeah. And we know that it needs to be ordered in the right pattern.
So are, anyone else have any comments, or, or?
I guess the only comment I'll, I'll make is that, you know, I, my sense is if there is functional issues that are either gonna shorten the lifetime or make, excuse me, a lot of replacements, square by square, a near-term issue, then I think that, that kind of settles it for me. Um, I'd love it open this summer, but I think that, you know, we're just borrowing this summer from the fall, or whenever, whenever it may be that it needs to get fixed, so.
Yeah, I think we all recognize it's a extremely challenging decision, and we obviously all want the, no one could have envisioned the children's room being closed as long, and we realize it's having a negative impact on the community, but.
I just had a question on the timetable, where is that from? Why is it that long? Do they have to make the carpet?
They have to reorder it.
That's just William's email, based on experience, they reorder it, yeah.
Maybe they're making it.
Yep.
It's made, it's made to order, it's made to order.
They're, okay, that's it, okay.
Yep.
It's a big, it's a large room, all right, well, I think-
So I'm, I mean, I'm willing to entertain a motion if someone wants to make a motion, and then we can have further discussion after that. Aaron?
I will make a motion to, um, delay the opening of the children's room um, in order to, uh, reorder the carpet, uh, in the proper pattern and get it installed properly.
All right, motion made and seconded by Carrie. Um, any further discussion? Anybody have any additional comments?
I have one quick question.
Yep.
Um, I took a picture when I was there on Monday, and it looks like there is carpet on the entire floor. Would it be, did you have?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, it, uh, would be possible to reopen the children's room in the interim, until we, until the new carpet gets in? And get it replaced? So then it could be open for the summer?
Well, that's kind of what I was implying with Roger, I mean-
She said no, right?
Oh, no, no, what, I, no, I, I, I don't think we talked about-
That's what I, well, that's what I meant, like, can we open it now, wait for the thing to get delivered?
I didn't understand that either, sorry.
Oh, sorry. That's what I had meant to say, was that can we go ahead and clean up everything, get it open now, and then in two months, when all this stuff comes in, then we would close it for a period of time. That's what I meant to ask, and then you had said-
Oh, no, no. Oh, no, no, I I may have misunderstood.
Okay, sorry about that.
I misunderstood.
Is that too disruptive? Is that what we?
I think the biggest issue from from what I would guess is that they'd have to clean it up. They'd have to move all the um stacks back, you know, which is gonna be some expense. And then they'll have to do that all again.
Do it all over again.
Do it all over again, which I think is worth asking William, because if it's not a huge expense.
And we could fund it possibly.
Hard to move those things?
Yes, they have to be disassembled. That was, that was one of the other concerns with the um it writ- the carpet installers for the children's room is that they were moving the stacks but not disassembling them and that can damage it.
They did damage a few of the stacks.
Miracle that we didn't lose books when that flood came in. Because I know the librarians picked up all the furniture they can move. I thought they moved the stacks too. It sounds like they didn't.
But I th- I think regardless of what this group um votes on tonight, I think that we should bring that question to William. Is it, is it possible to open it for for two or three months? Even if, you know, let's say they, the the stuff comes in in two months, you know, even if we wanna start in three months, you know, to do that.
And I would, I would, Mr. Chair, say that um aside from any insurance matters and that we need to be mindful that um even though the town administrator and assistant town administrator have been very involved in this, um that it's really our decision that I think it it may be easy to expect others to do this, but we're really in charge of the building.
I, and and so I just be.
Tell them what we like and see if we agree.
But but we have to pay attention to the staff and how they feel about their space because it's possible that this could be delivered in six weeks or five weeks. Wouldn't that be surprising? We've done all this work and then two weeks later, we're undoing it all.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So should we talk to the staff before we talk to William about it?
I think, to me, you can't really answer that question unless you have a better idea of the the delivery time. I mean, if there's no chance it's gonna be six weeks, that's different than if it's definitely ten weeks or longer. So.
It's very disruptive to the staff to have them um being prepared for summer reading program, have to move all their stuff
Right.
in there, get, get, you know, I I don't, I think the staff would not love to do that.
Okay.
So even if we were to fix it right now, it would still be disruptive to the staff.
Yep, okay.
Don't you think we should do a little bit more research and ask them? Because then that way, we're doing, you know, they're having part of the decision.
Yeah.
Because it's a give and take, right?
Sure.
It could help the community, make people feel better, we're doing the best we can. But if it's too disruptive to the staff and they they can judge.
So I can, I I think, I can talk to Sarah, um and then I can talk to William.
Uh but and I think, I think that's wonderful. I do think, I really do think we should talk to Sarah because she would have the the best sense and then also William to see if there's any um restrictions, you know, from the insurance company. But I think that if we're, if we're doing that, then we as a board need to be willing to fund those expenses because the, our library staff cannot do it themselves. We need to have professional movers to assist with moving those stacks. It's not something that they can do.
My my concern.
Somebody that really knows what they're doing.
Absolutely.
If they don't know what to do.
And they found that.
I think we would, sorry, I didn't, oh, I I think we would just have the same company that's doing it anyways would do do that.
Sounds good.
Roger?
I I was just going to say that that my, one of my concerns is i- is one of safety that if if these things are starting to peel back, that then that alone becomes a trip hazard. Um and then how would we remediate that in the short term? We don't wanna be creating any liability in that room just by things that may naturally happen if things continue to peel, especially if they're being walked on by patrons. We already know that they're lifting.
Okay.
Could we perhaps maybe do like a special meeting with Sarah and William to kind of talk through? Or or I guess maybe if you, oops, sorry.
I personally, I'm not sure if the whole group needs to do that.
I don't think we need to do that. I think somebody needs to evaluate what what um Roger's saying.
Yep.
Do we think that's gonna happen and is it a hazard? And is it worth, if so, then we have to decide if it's worth it.
I think Doug agreed to do that, right?
Yeah, I agreed to do that, yep, yeah.
If that's gonna happen, it's too hazardous, then we, then I figure, I figure once we decide what we're gonna do, then we need to come up with a communication strategy to share with everybody.
So so Mr. Chair, I I would, all right, so I I think we could probably proceed to a vote without shutting down the possibility of a second vote if if needed regarding what happens next. Um I I think we could probably proceed with voting to.
On the carpet itself.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
On the carpet itself. We have to.
So the the current motion on the floor is to um a vote in the affirmative means that we're, as a group, we want to proceed with replacing the carpet um as a whole.
But I I guess a point of order is that Aaron's motion was to delay the opening, to reorder the carpet, that one necessarily meant the other, that that, so I don't know if you wanna withdraw the piece about delaying the opening and then.
No, that's not what I said.
Oh, I thought you said that the motion was to delay the
Yeah, I think you did say delay the opening to to allow us time to order the carpet.
So if you wanna withdraw, through Mr. Chair, I don't know.
I feel like a few people just made up different things that I said.
No, I, no, I was taking notes. I thought you had mentioned.
I heard that too.
No, no, I I did say I would.
Would you wanna restate your motion?
Just restate it.
In favor of uh delaying the opening of the children's room in order to uh order the carpet to to do the job properly.
Yep.
Yeah.
But does that necessarily mean, okay?
If you wanna say it some other way.
The point is to open, is the point is to order the new carpet, not to delay specifically.
Okay, okay, gotcha. All right, I understand.
We can do another motion if you wanna.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure we were all in agreement that what the motion was.
Intent was, yep.
And the intent, yeah.
Can you restate the 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 motion here?
I don't think we need to restate it.
I don't think I can.
Yeah, yeah.
You got it. I think we got it.
A vote in the affirmative is to order the new carpet and replace the entire children's room carpet.
Yep.
So, um all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Great. Oh, thank you for the, I, as I, as I keep saying, it's a challenging decision, but um I, you know, I think as we've discussed, it's it's probably the best thing for the long term.
That was really effective deliberation. I'm glad we talked through that.
Yep.
Yeah, and thank you for the due diligence of, you know, repeated conversations because it's, things evolve over time, so I thought I had the most of the information.
What I thought was going to be a discussion purely on aesthetics completely changed the way I looked at this as far as the function and the the comp, how these pieces were compromised.
Great.
Can I ask one question? If I wanted to go by and look at it in person, is that possible?
Of course, you can go by anytime.
Yeah, we can just introduce yourself and um you and um Sarah Banisher would be a wonderful person if she's there, of course. Um our librarians, you have different schedules, so they're not always there, you know, when the library's open.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and as you heard, I would recommend going in the teen room and kind of like looking at that because it is, it is a kind of a busy carpet, but you can see the difference between the the teen room, which is in a three by or four by four pattern versus the children's room. The children's room, you'll have to be let in though because it is locked.
Okay.
Okay, great, so moving.
So Mr. Chair, is this, is this agenda item still open? Do we need to either by a vote or by consensus, agree what the next steps are regarding um what I, what the part of the discussion was regarding? Does, did this vote necessarily mean that we were gonna leave the collection there until the rug gets put in?
I, my intent, well, I heard the motion on the floor or the motion that we accepted was to proceed with ordering all new carpet.
Right.
Right.
So what about the, all right, so you just.
I thi- I think what Doug, I think what you kind of agreed to do is talk to Sarah and William and basically assess the situation and say, hey, Sarah, would it be too disruptive to do, to to move? And if she says yes, then it's done. If William says the cost is too much to to move things, then it's done. So or, you know, then then those uh discussions are over.
Or if he says it's not safe, that's what worried him.
Yeah, or if the carpet's not safe. So if there's a bunch of things that can stop us trying to reopen early, you know, temporarily, um so I think that's all we just need to do is we need to just get some information. And if it turns out that there's nothing blocking us, like if Sarah's fine with it, if William's fine with it, if the cost is low and the carpet will stay down in theory for the duration, then maybe we can come back and have.
Yeah, I think that's what Roger's saying.
Meeting or something like that.
If the best case scenario would allow us to open temporarily, then we would need to come back as a board to vote for that.
It sounds to me that's a stretch.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah, I did say delay opening the children's room in favor of ordering new carpet for the record.
Oh, okay, then I misunderstood you. I apologize.
Yeah.
I know you needed it for the notes.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so um moving on to the policy subcommittee with Erin, did you have any updates for the group?
Yes, um so the intent of the policy subcommittee um at this point is um I will continue to stay on as chair. Um and I believe John uh would still like to be part of the the subcommittee. Um but we are uh looking for the director to join us. Um so I think our next steps is uh to talk with Tom, bring him up to speed um at a subcommittee meeting in the, to be determined in the future, once he's um settled. Um and we really wanna have somebody from staff. And it's not really our purview to um, you know, proposition the staff to join the policy subcommittee, you know? It's an odd choice of words, but that's how I feel, right?
Recruit.
No, not even, you know what I mean, but like to go and, you know, just like, hey, you want, you know, it's not really our job to do that. So so I think um speaking with Tom, we uh we can talk about strategies to see how he can help um uh talk to the staff and and see if somebody will join us. Um and e- even as a a kind of a neat idea is, we'd love to have like a a rotating staff member uh on policy committee to get some really kind of different views on things. And we talked about potentially having somebody who was, you know, from the union uh on the policy subcommittee. Um not necessarily to facilitate uh approval of policies, but certainly to um get that uh that opinion and and that feedback on on what what might constitute as a change in work.
Right, the context, yeah.
Yes, because that's a big um part of what the 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 union looks out for. Some of our uh library staff are unionized.
Okay.
Yep.
All of the library staff is union, except for the director.
Oh, wow, I didn't know that.
Yep.
So we have two um two union representatives who we uh give the policies to and they review it and come back to the policy committee with with questions and.
I'm actually not sure if it's all the staff, if it includes part-time staff to.
I think it it does. I I don't know if they can opt out.
Include everything, yeah.
I think it includes everyone. I don't, I don't think there's an opt-out provision, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, okay.
But it's a good question for us to confirm, but that was my understanding.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Um but the way policy uh committee, subcommittee works, um just a ten thousand foot overview is um we have active policies that have been um used at the library for years and the policy subcommittee reviews them and then we bring them back to the board um for for vote. And then it becomes renewed. So we renew policies. Sometimes we make changes um to be more um current with the times, but also to be more appropriate for a library that's changed since the last time we reviewed it. And certainly our library's changed in the past five or six years. Um but then we rely on the director um to help write new policy. And then it becomes heavily um, you know, re-revised by the subcommittee. It may take a few months depending on the the length of the policy. But then ultimately, after legal reviews it, the um um the union reviews it um and then it comes to the board for final vote and then that becomes policy. And we try it. Sometimes something's brand new, like a piano uh policy, because we have a piano. We had to write that. That was brand new. And uh we try it and sometimes it um there's major flaws that you don't know until you put into practice. Uh and that sometimes they come back sooner than we would like.
And I would just reiterate that it's, it's one of the more important roles of this board is to put those policies in place and to review them.
Yep, absolutely. That's it, thank you.
Great. Thank you for all the work, because I know that is a lot of work going through all the different policies and and thinking about the new policies.
Yep, thank you.
Great. Any other questions on policy?
Just one quick technical question. Um if I'm not mistaken, when you open those policies up on the town website, I mean, the library website, are you entering a, like a Google Drive or is that a PDF?
It's a good question.
Because, and the reason I ask is that um not everyone, I I remember having some compatibility issues regarding accessing documents.
I mean, it should be the PDFs that are directly on the website that you link in, but I know the previous library director used Google Drive quite a bit.
Well, Tom is an IT guy too, so maybe he'll be able to figure out some way to do it in the same way that the town documents show up in PDF.
Cool, sounds goo- that sounds great. I will add that to his onboarding task list. Okay, so next on the agenda is approving the six previous um meeting minutes.
Which I um respectfully ask that we defer to the next meeting and add uh the meeting minutes for for this meeting. And I will uh put together the the package of those for for next meeting.
Okay.
And I, and Mr. Chair, I will add that on the executive committee ones, um I took the, I took some high level notes of when those began and then when we, then when we uh voted to close the executive session and then we voted to adjourn, so I can get those times to you on the two respective dates.
Thank you, Roger.
Because you're welcome, because they wouldn't have been on film, because they were executive session, so.
Yep.
All right, great.
And then Roger, can you remind me, is it the chair's responsibility to get those minutes to the town? Like, do I need to send those to the town once approved?
It it was, we're without, and and it's further on the agenda.
Right, yeah.
But um we're without a an um an admin staff. Normally, it would be that person. And so since the departure of um, since um Shannon left, we hadn't approved any minutes since Shannon's departure. And so if we did, in the absence of an a- admin, yeah, I guess it would be the chair or vice to to get those to the town clerk.
Okay.
Um and I had been um creating the minutes and the, I mean, not the minutes, the agendas since she departed, so.
And Chris, Roger brings up a good point. A lot of this content is typically provided by the admin or the library director.
Okay.
So it has been a bit unusual for the past, whatever.
Yeah, couple of months.
Couple of months.
Do we see, is there a plan for that?
Um it's later, that's later on the agenda.
Later on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
So we will defer uh the minute approval until our next meeting and then we'll add any of the meeting minutes that are not on that list.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Um I'm gonna go use the bathroom. Uh I signed all these bills, so feel free to approve them without me.
Okay, we still have a quorum, a quorum, yeah, okay. Um so next on the agenda is approving bills. We have four warrants, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven.
There is no forty-five.
Oh, thank you. It is N A, thank you.
Forty-five is week forty-five.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
Um these are warrants that um the business person from the library sends around to the board. Um there's usually an email or there is an email where we have to go in and sign it. It's actually not, I don't think it's required for them to pay it, but we we like to have the board go through and review them in in person. And so they sign it and then we um approve the bills uh tonight.
I'm so.
I'm sorry, I think it is required because the director is absent. That's why we had to.
Thank you, actually.
Normally, we aren't required to go into the library to sign the bills, but because we've had, we have not had a library director since October, we've, at at least two of us need to go in to sign the warrant um in order for them to pay the bills. And if it, and then if we can't do that, like on week forty-five, then it gets deferred to the next week.
Got it.
Um can we do a consent agenda? Can I get a consent agenda to approve warrants forty-four, forty-six and forty-seven in the amounts listed in the agenda?
In sources presumably.
In sources as listed in the warrants.
Second?
Second, second by John. Um all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed?
Did you say?
I declare the motion carried.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah. Um ongoing business, uh first is FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five budget updates. Um I don't know, do we, do we have any of those? I don't think we have those this week.
No, we we, uh the budget was approved at town meeting.
Yep.
And I think basically it was available, the budget was available for viewing in the library. Um they did put um contingencies for a few of the lines that are, there's uh certain lines that need to be calculated based upon the rest of the budget, so there were some notes in there. So I think um that's absolutely gonna be one of the things that we'll want our library director to look at, make sure that um, you know, you you understands
Yep.
how um, you know, how it was created.
Yep.
But a very unusual budget process this year.
Okay, and yeah, I think um Roger and I talked about it, but we should at least get a copy of the the budget so that we can review or at least everyone can review it um so that we're familiar with the budget.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yep, definitely. And whether that's, maybe that's one of the things that we have Tom present to us, you know, either next month or the month after. Um I'm assuming we don't have an IT update. Um do we have anybody, did anyone have a chance to do a walkabout this month?
Um I did and I took some pictures, really just more for ongoing documentation. There wasn't really anything new. There wasn't really anything new. The, the newest thing, I guess, is that there were, uh, I believe at our last meeting, we had talked that there were leaks in the green roof in the community room. So that was kind of like the last thing that had come up. But there were, there were no other new issues really this week. The garden beds did get installed, so if you haven't seen those.
I drove past this morning. They look beautiful. I mean, they're not, they're not planted yet, but that's on the way.
Yep, yep. So one of the teen librarians, Sarah, I think she was gonna coordinate with you, Dana, or, or somebody's coordinating with you, maybe, on the soil for those.
Oh, yeah, we've been, yeah, we've been through it. We've been working on this for months.
Yeah.
Is that the terrace?
Feels like years.
Yeah, so when you're going around the corner, there are wooden beds, raised beds, they look, I, I was gonna almost turn around this morning and take a picture to show everybody, because they look so great, but.
I did have a picture, but I was hoping I could project. But, yeah, so the, the Capitol campaign funded the purchase of these raised garden beds that are in the four tiers that are kind of across from the, the Grafton Inn. And then there is a children's raised bed in the back of the property for the children's room.
I didn't see that yet.
The raised beds themselves were installed, but they still need to get soil-filled and, and obviously planted.
It was anonymous gift of someone to do the community beds. It's just taken us a while. It wasn't really, the way it was created, we, isn't what we expected, but it's worked out well.
Sorry, we're like diverging a little bit from the walkabout. Was there any other comments from the walkabout?
Uh, there was only one thing, which wasn't really a, like a maintenance issue or anything. It's just that the, uh, the musical instruments still aren't installed, so.
No, waiting. There's a timetable for that.
Okay, cool.
Great.
I have something to add to the walkabout.
Yep.
So I happened to go and take a look, after we had a pretty heavy rain, to take a look at that outside book drop. And I think you've seen this a couple of times, but essentially the gutter right above.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I took a small video. You can, you can kind of see it here. You can pass it around if you want to. But essentially, that's the grate that kind of goes across. And what you can see is, um, as the water kind of fills up, the mulch bed there, where the book drop is, it runs across into the drain, and all that mulch is kind of pouring into the drain. So what I found is you can see the gutters on the left and right of it, just kind of drip, 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 right into the beds there. And so I, I went and talked to the, um, the library staff, and they said that Evan was there. And he had gotten up on the ladder and tried to kind of reach, reach in there and, and clean it out a little bit, and he got doused in his work gear. You know, uh, he got up on the ladder and he was trying to like reach into the gutters, like, that's great that you're doing that, but why?
Yeah.
Why would you be reaching into gutters, you know, and he got doused, so I think.
But were the gutters full of stuff?
Do we have a plan for this in the weeks?
I think they just need to be cleaned. That's all that, that is.
Okay.
Can we put stone down in that area? Brown-colored stone.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Well, yeah, I mean, stone's gonna wear, wear away too. You're gonna, they're gonna be like a big drainage kind of stone thing. Do you know what I mean? Have you ever seen that before?
I think Roger's saying it so the, the mulch doesn't.
The mulch doesn't splash out. Doesn't splash. In other words, that, that wherever water is pooling and mulch is floating away, then maybe that area, we could consider putting stones in that area.
I mean, they don't have to be little stones. They could be larger stones that would not, you know, slip as much.
So who takes care of this stuff? Do we know at this point?
I think they just need to hire a gutter cleaner and probably.
Yeah, I mean, that's typically the library director would hire some maintenance person to go do the gutter, and then they would maybe put together a proposal if they wanted to move it to stone.
What about the leaks in the green room? I mean, in the green roof? And we don't know if that's, what does that go, how are we gonna deal with that?
I think that's still.
It's good that we brought it to our attention, but if we're not doing anything, it doesn't really matter, right?
Yeah, and I think the, it's a little bit unclear.
Okay.
The timelines for the leaks, right? Some of the staff says it was recent. John had pictures, and some of them look recent, some of them look older, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's clear when it was happening. But I think it's something that we should just keep an eye on.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, since John had brought up the garden beds.
Yep.
Are those part of programming at all?
Yes, they are.
All right. We have an accessibility issue there? Um, there's, there are steps.
They're, they're, I believe they're gonna try and install one more that will be accessible.
Yeah, and I don't know if we should let Dana since, I mean, I can answer as, but it's.
Well, actually, there are. Okay, so basically, um, okay, I don't know how, I'll, let me put it this way. Basically, um, there's a couple of things. We had talked about buying, that we have looked into buying a couple of the beds that are actually handicap accessible, which means that you can actually, you can actually have a wheelchair go under, underneath it, and you can, you can work on it right there. And we're gonna do it in the green area. And then, um, there are also, that first bed, you should be able to come in and see, and access one side.
Right.
So that is something that, um, that's not what we anticipated, but that's what happened, so we're, that's how we're dealing with it.
All right.
So I talked to great length with Beth about this. One thing that we wanted to see, it seems like now, we didn't know it, but now, Sarah, we have a real advocate within the library who is doing programming that will utilize the community beds and use the outside.
All right.
So now that we have that, we can order, we can order it, we have talked about ordering one.
All right.
And we thought we could order one and see what the need is. But anybody could use it, even somebody that wants to go and just have a seat and sit down. So you don't have to be, it could be some, and, uh, some, somebody that doesn't want to be on their feet for a long time.
Right, in other words, it's an accommodation, even if other areas up top remain sort of off limits.
I'm just saying it could accommodate a lot of different people, not, you know, even elderly or somebody that just can't stand, I can't, I can't bend down, or I don't want to sit down, so it'd be good, so.
Right.
We should probably, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Thanks, John, for doing these walkabouts. You've been, it's almost become your, like, permanent.
I know, it's his permanent.
Yeah, John's walkabout, you know?
Yeah, so for Chris's information, we, the board does a walkabout every month, whether it's, um, inside the building or outside the building, and just as John pointed out, just looking at things, and it's always good to have a different, different eye look at them.
Okay.
Whether they're leaks or something in the building that's broken, or falling off, or something like that. So for next month, who wants to volunteer to do the walkabout?
I'll do that one.
Excellent.
I'll do, I'll do it with you and show you what I've been doing, and then you can hopefully see what I've been, you know, missing.
That sounds great.
And typically, it's, it's, you know, you snap pictures with your phone, if you can throw them into like a PowerPoint or something like that, so that you can then distribute it to the board.
And Mr. Chair, oh, I'm sorry.
So I, um, I know we've talked about this before, just don't want to lose sight of the flooring in the teen game room. Um, I did meet with Debbie again, and it definitely is an issue, you know, that the, the carpet is really, it re, we really need a solution to replace the carpet, whether we do it with flooring, which would be the preference of the, of the, um, the head of teen library services. Um, but we, we need to get that on the agenda and, and come up with a solution, because it's, it's just.
Could that be something for the new library?
So that was, well, so that was my responsibility from, uh, meetings ago, and so I worked with William. And he left it as that he was getting a quote from the carpet installer that was doing the children's room. And since, of course, that didn't go through, um, I'll touch base with William again to see if he's, can get that information from the new installer.
Yeah.
Because we can't really make a decision as a board until we know what the price is and what the budget is.
And that's what we're waiting for, is just if something is put in front of us, we say yes, and we'll pay for it out of this budget, then they can move forward with it.
I, I have one quick recommendation, because it was looking pretty, pretty rough when I was in there on Monday. If we could scut, have William, or whoever would do it, schedule another cleaning.
Over more of the weekend? It might be too late.
I think that should be Debbie, or, I mean, that should be the teen rooms' responsibility is to reach out to William to do that, right? I would, I mean, I would encourage Debbie to.
Okay.
Schedule of, even if it's monthly with that steam cleaner, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Till we get the new floor laid down.
Well, yeah, the town has, I can't remember what that name of that instrument is, the machine. It's like a carpet cleaner. It's like a steamer.
Yeah.
The town bought one, and the intent was that it would be used in the library, you know, somewhat frequently, you know, once a month.
It's not just for the library.
No, it's for the whole town, right? So I would encourage Debbie to, to try to schedule with the town to do that once a month or every other month.
Okay.
But you're right, for the teen rooms specifically, the goal was to change it from carpet to something that was more easily cleanable.
Yeah, I was just thinking in the interim until, until we change something with that.
So do you want to reach out to Debbie?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Okay, um, any other questions, comments about the walkabout?
Just one quick comment, Mr. Chair, that for, for Chris's benefit, that I was, at one, one or more meetings, I had been vocal against the walkabout. I was kind of like, well, we've got all these full-time staff that are there every day, and so I'm gonna eat my words and say that it's been my experience, and in spite of my objections, that that new set of eyes, you know, even though we're an executive board, this one function that is hands-on, I've found to be beneficial, because having that extra set of eyes is, yeah, it's been useful, so. In spite of us being an executive board, it's like boots to the ground, and, and I think we've all benefited from this, so.
Yeah, and it's actually, if you haven't thought of it this way, it's, it's one of the few responsibilities of the board is stewardship, right? And stewardship is actually going, making sure everything is in good working order, the building that we're, have been entrusted, right?
Yep, exactly, so, yeah, so I, I was, you were right and I was wrong. You know, so, yeah, so, yeah, let's continue those walkabouts. Yep.
Great. Um, moving on, we have, we're on number eight. Um, I don't, did we receive a director's report this month?
No, no, I put, I had put that on as a placeholder, knowing that the answer to that would be, it's been deferred in the absence of the, um, administrative staff.
Yep.
That that, Shannon had done that, um, well, Debbie had done it, and then Shannon took over, and so that, that's been deferred. But all the other stats and things like the weekly report and all the stats that go into that are still maintained for the, for like MBLC and CW Mars and things like that.
Yeah, so most of those stats, as Roger mentioned, are maintained by the electronic systems. We have like a door counter for people coming in and out. Obviously, all the borrowing stats are all done through CW Mars. Um, and then as part of our monthly meeting, the director puts out in various formats, but basically lets us know what the trends are. Is it going up, down, and just general, general stats for the library.
And through you, Mr. Chair, yeah, to Chris, that CW Mars is central in Western Mass automated resource sharing.
Ooh, look at you.
All right, there you go. So, um, I'm, I'm waiting for acronym trivia at, at reunion on Wednesday night. All right. And it's basically the hundred or so towns in this sort of catchment area, that automated resource, that, that book sharing, that we need to maintain a certain level of service to be part of this borrowing consortium, okay, so.
Great, so on to old business, 2023 Grafton Town Report. Um, the Board of Library Trustees and Grafton Public Library reports are now in print. They're all part of that annual town meeting with, you went to town, I'm sorry, annual town report. If you went to town meeting and picked up this massive green book, we are in there, and thank you to Roger for putting that together.
I didn't put the whole book together.
No, not the whole book.
No, no, no. But.
I would encourage you to read it. It's got a lot of the stats for the year and other, uh, really pertinent information.
Yeah, so, yeah, for both the library trustees and the Grafton Public Libraries. In past years, there were some years that the library trustees and the Grafton Public Library reports were in consecutive order. This year it's not. But I'll just, even though this is not specifically library-related, but it, it includes our report. This thing is a three-hundred-and-ninety-one-page document. When I moved to town in 2000, it was maybe a hundred-and-twenty-five. It's tripled in size. So Cindy Eyde, and, um, although the, like Amber and others have, have helped, Cindy Eyde and the Town Administrator Selectors Office compiled this information and read through every report for any glaring errors. So she deserves kudos for really have been the, the, the person behind the scenes to make sure that this thing is in proper order before going to print, so.
We should thank her.
Yeah, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Aaron?
So I'm gonna out myself here, but how many people were at town meeting on Monday? Great. So as, uh, I missed it, because I started going to, um, I'm a new scout master for troop one oh six, and that's the same night as meeting, so I happened to miss it, and somebody reminded me afterwards, and I felt bad about it. But as a board, we should always attend town meetings, uh, because we're required as a board to represent, even if it's, we don't have something on the agenda.
Right.
We usually sit together, although Roger sat on the other side.
I, I didn't.
We usually sit at the library side.
Yeah.
Was I being a town meeting snob?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't, yeah.
Yeah, did, did we need to post an, an agenda, though? I mean, it's town meeting. Board is supposed to be there.
I don't think we ever have.
We never have.
We're not discussing library business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
And then, uh, along, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, along the, um, lines of Aaron's comments that, uh, aside from department heads being required by our town charter to, to attend town meeting, doing the Alpha search in, in the town clerk's website about the committees and commissions, we had a total of two, about two-hundred people at town meeting, and there's about three-hundred people that comprise the boards and commissions in town. So a third of the, all board members in town were absent, so.
Well, about everybody there was a board member, so more than that.
Yeah, it's actually more than that.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, more than that, yeah.
Yeah.
There are three-hundred people.
Well, no, no, actually, the board, that, yeah, there's about three-hundred people that comprise all the.
Wow.
Members of the boards and committees, both elected and appointed, and so, but to your point, Aaron, um, we should, yeah, unless there's some type of huge commitment or emergency, it's important that we, you know, as elected officials, that we show up.
Yep, I would agree, and I, I, I mean, it's probably an extremely rare event, but occasionally there might be a library question. And if there's not, you know, if the library director in this case wasn't there, then it would probably be one of us that would have to speak up to answer that question.
Yep.
Okay, um, next, um, Roger, public library doors and alarm system?
I, I just put this on there. I, I was, I'm on, well, as chair now, um, our new director will be the go-to person, but, uh, this is last week, the third time in six weeks that I was called by the alarm company because the alarm had gone off. It was, I think, Saturday, twenty minutes before closing. Now, because the alarm wasn't, because the doors are all on computer system, and there's, they're taking chains to lock this with a padlock on the outside. I, I don't know if, um, people are just messing around, kids, I don't know. But like, if I, if it were closing time, and I saw a padlocked door with wrapped around chains, I wouldn't jiggle it to see if I could get in. But that appears to be what happened, that the entire building was secured. But it appeared to be likely the front doors that sort of had breached that, um, you know, and tripped the alarm. And so, um, so twofold, I guess. I was frustrated with being the go-to person because I didn't have a key. And I, or, or a pass or whatever to swipe, and, and so, um, in the absence of a director, I felt that that was necessary, and I was crossing my fingers that it wouldn't happen again, and it did.
And it did.
I was on my, I was, I was on my way to shrewd spring. I was like, I gotta get called back. But, um, I just put it on there, um, to just, um, not to vent, but to call attention that this is an ongoing, like, IT issue, because even though there's keys on those outside doors, the whole system is run, um, through a whole network, and so.
Yep.
And then, so the doors, um, I guess right now the clocks are off, where things are supposed to unlock at a certain time automatically, and then lock again at a certain time and, and set things, and that whole system is still haywire, and so.
Is it haywire because the, there's no one managing the software, and no one knows how to do it, or some other?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. So it's just, it's, it's, um, I think it's, um, a significant punch list item.
Yeah, I can follow up with that.
Because it, it, what's happening is that valuable police resources are being used to show up, because we never know whether it's a false alarm, or whether someone has broken into the building. And so, um, two officers have arrived. Uh, on two of the last three occasions, two crews have arrived. Now, if it had been super busy, you know, we wouldn't have necessarily gotten more than one, but I think, you know, for as much important stuff, this is covered by our police force, these false alarms have to stop.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, Aaron, when you were chair, did you have access to the building?
No, we never did.
Okay.
And because we always had a director.
Right.
At the time, who was in town.
Yep.
But, uh, the library was largely closed to the public while I was chair.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll follow up, certainly with, um, the director when they're on board. Um, we do have security cameras, so if, I think if, if there's any scenario where something was damaged, or it's a recurring event, we could start reviewing security. or it's a recurring event, we could start reviewing security footage.
Sure.
Yep.
So we don't know what happened. It could have been someone grabbing it, or it could have just happened.
Okay, this particular alarm, the, the alarm company in the last, the first two out of the three gave me a code with some numbers and letters, and so that meant a certain zone. On this, this time, it was just, they called it a general alarm code. So they didn't give it a qualified number and letter sequence, so I don't know. I, I'm presuming it was a front door, and I don't know if it's, it's kids that are realizing, oh, I gotta do, all right, kids, if you're listening to this after the fact, do not hear this part of the conversation. And maybe the kids may be jiggling it and saying, oh, you know, I can set the alarm off by just shaking the door at five minutes after the building's locked up.
Yep. Yeah, and if it was, if it, honestly, if it was that close, and if it was a kid, they might have no concept of how, they might have thought it might have been opened. I don't know. You never know. But I think it's something that we should just keep an eye on.
The chains, it was wrapped around like with like four times the chains.
Why are there chains on it?
But I.
Because it wasn't locked. In other words, it's not locking. And so what, what they're doing is they're locking it by putting chains.
I see.
And I don't think it was, I don't think it's so sensitive that like a gust of wind is, is necessarily setting off, but maybe, I don't know.
Sounds like it needs to be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the initiative of trying to figure out what's, what's why the doors aren't locking, and if anyone has access to that code system, and if we need to have someone come in and check it. Okay, next is also, Roger, administrative assistant vacancy update.
So I spoke with William Blake, and I guess there were six applicants for the administrative assistant, and the three finalists backed out. And so they're, they're starting from scratch. He's going to repost that.
Okay. And can you remind the group, the board, is that a full-time position?
It's a thirty-five-hour-a-week position.
Which is full-time.
Yeah, it's full-time. Yeah, it's full-time.
And does that person report to the director?
Yeah.
So it's good that we're, he's almost on board.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the timing, hopefully, we'll get some more applicants that will actually go through the process so that we can have that person on board soon after Tom starts.
And we, we know for a fact that that person will also be the scribe for the board?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, it's part of the job description.
Part of it, yeah. Okay, new business, settlement agreement, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, between the town and the union. Roger, do you want to provide an update on that also?
What happened?
I mean, there was, sorry, just, there was, Roger shared in the meeting packet, a couple of those agreements, settlement agreements.
So what happened is, is that I, I wasn't actually happy at all that I stumbled upon these. I was looking for some other information in recent select board agendas for a particular discussion item on another matter unrelated to this board, and I stumbled upon the three nineteen twenty-four. There were two agreements. One had to do with longevity pay, and then the second had to do with reductions in subcontracting and mentioned specific positions. And it mentioned actually the admin position. Now, I can only speculate that the date of this settlement agreement coincided with the date of the select board meeting, so I would think that union negotiations would have been part of the select board executive session, so they couldn't speak about it. So when we lost our executive, our administrative assistant, I, I think this settlement agreement, or the, the second part of it regarding reductions in subcontracting, specifically said that the part-time admin position would be departing by the end of April. And we weren't told about this. In other words, all right, so the union matters. We're, we're in charge of the lone non-union position, meaning the director. We're without a director. Our town administrator is the acting director. So someone, you know, maybe by design or by usual course of business, we wouldn't, this wouldn't be pertinent to our board, but the very agreement necessarily spoke to a staff member who's our scribe.
Right.
And so we should have been notified that we were going to lose our scribe, and, and we've just kind of sucked it up and volunteered those hours, and I guess the, either through this agreement or through no one being available, there were no other hours or other person available within the staff to, to take over that role. And so we didn't, it didn't make sense just to hire someone on the quick who wasn't familiar with these matters. So we've, I think we're the only elected board probably in the history of the town or the past twenty years who is now doing its own agendas, doing its own minutes and such, you know, and having our, a volunteer be the scribe, and so it's behind us. But I was just, I, I just wanted to let people know that, that since we're privy to the union contract, this is pertinent to and could be considered an extension of it, especially for the new director. And so, but I was really, I was kind of peeved that, that we weren't given the heads-up that there was a, a piece in this agreement that necessarily would curtail.
Would impact us, yeah.
Would impact us.
Can you explain that? I, what, are you saying that that position no longer exists?
No, it no longer exists as a part-time position. In other words, it.
And it ended at the end of April.
Ended at the end of April.
So all of May, we've been without the scribe, and we were not notified at all, I think is Roger's main point.
In other words, this.
I thought the person quit, so we didn't have anybody.
No, no, all right, so.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's not like the position's been eliminated.
No, no, she, she stepped down, and, and she stepped down, but I, I think that at the time, one or more individuals, and maybe even her, didn't realize that this was already a public document until that point because it was union negotiations and part of the executive session that, that people may have thought that they had to not speak of this publicly. Because they didn't, but this was actually part of the select board meeting packet on that same day.
Yeah, I mean, this was back in March.
This is back March nineteenth, and so it necessarily impacted us, and so it's behind us. But just consider this to be sort of like part of the union agreement. And so perhaps this should be also, in other words, the union agreement is online, right? I think on the library website. It's public record.
It's public record, so I'm not sure if it's on the website, but.
If it is, I would ask that this be added to it.
Yep.
That's all.
Do you have any, any comments or suggestions on how we can improve upon the communication with the, the town and the town administrator? Because I thought, I thought we actually had a pretty good communication line between you and William.
No, no, we did, we did. And, and I think that there's so much content and back and forth that led to this document that from the, maybe it was just an oversight, you know what I mean? I don't think there's anything, there was any malicious intent. I'm just saying that, that.
No, I wasn't implying that, I was.
No, but we rely on, we rely on, on a staff member to do something, and then, then when that staff member leaves and no one else is either willing or able to, either on their own by volunteering or by this agreement, able to step in, we're left with doing our own agendas, meeting packets, and minutes, and I don't think any other board.
No, it's a lot of work.
No elected board is doing.
Yep, okay.
You know, they're using staff, and so.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Right.
Any, any other questions for Roger on that? Okay. Next on the agenda is public input.
Mr. Chair, I have one more new business item. I will be sending you this state form, unless you want to look it up. On the MBLC website, now that you're chair, I, I can't sign this. It, the chair of the library trustees sends to the MBLC, there's a certain point person. There's a form that now announces and certifies that we have a, a new director, a permanent director. I had signed a form back in the, in December, toward the end of December, that we no longer had a library director. So this now closes that loop.
Okay.
And so I, it, it's probably just as easy for you to go on the MBLC website, and I think it's, there's some section either under forms or resources that speaks to this form that certifies that we have a new director, and then you simply sign off on it. I don't think it needs to be cosigned at all. It's just like singular authority to, and then you send it to them.
Okay, great.
It's just, it's, it's a state aid requirement, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else have new business? Okay. Seeing we have no public, then the last item is just the next regular meetings, policy subcommittee, that's still TBD.
Yep.
Okay. The Friends of the Grafton Library, Carrie already mentioned the annual town meeting on June seventh at six-thirty.
I believe it's June eighth, Friday, June eighth.
Oh, June eighth, sorry.
No, seven.
Seven.
What is it? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, Friday, Friday, June seventh at six-thirty in the historic reading room.
Yep, and there'll be just varied like snacks, and, and if it is okay with the rest of the board, I will email our new library director to invite him on behalf of the Friends at the request of the Friends, and hopefully he'll be able to attend.
So I have a question. Were you, I, did I, I think I interrupted you, didn't I?
It's, it's okay.
So, so.
A question for me or Carrie?
No, the group. I guess when we're talking about what is available for rent, or what is a, what is a room that is considered available for a function? Is this, I thought we said that the historic reading room was off limits, notwithstanding the community room being off limits.
I don't think we ever agreed upon that, did we?
No.
I think there's a lot, I think.
I guess the concern is you, you know, having it during business hours would certainly be, but do, do we have a policy? I thought that the room rental policy did not.
Well, it's not being rented. They're not paying a fee.
Well, the rental policy states that, says that it doesn't apply to, that there is no fee for.
Doesn't apply to the Friends?
Well, for five oh one C three for nonprofits.
Okay. But does it specifically speak affirmatively, or, or is it silent on the historic reading room?
It's a good question.
I know it came up at the Small Stones Festival, but that would have, that would have impacted the, the daytime hours, the operating hours.
Yeah, I don't, I, I know the policy always left discretion to the library director.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, this is the, is this for the Friends to have their event there? The Friends is a nonprofit group that's been, they're the backbone of the library, so I think it's very important.
But I, I don't think it's, it's that, it's a nonprofit per se because the Small Stones Festival was as well, but that would have impacted daytime hours.
In this particular case, I, I, I don't, I think that we don't have the community rooms not available.
But I just want to be mindful of not running into a situation that we discussed in the past about, you know.
Requiring staff there. Is there going to be a staff there to open and close it?
I don't know. I mean, I'm not in charge of it.
The Friends work that out with the, the library.
They have.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
I just want to make sure we're on.
I'm just communicating. I'm not in front of the meeting.
I just want to make sure we're on solid ground and adhering to our own policies, and I didn't know if there's any.
I mean, it's a good point because it might be that we should technically, as a board, grant approval, you know, to allow that to happen. So, Aaron, is it possible for us to, to grab that policy?
I know this isn't the time, but I think in the future, there's going to be discussion with the library director about certain things.
I'm going to the link.
I don't want to belabor the discussion, but I, I just want to be caught, I, I just want to make sure we exercise proper caution regarding, you know, I guess equity to, to.
Well, I do agree that there should be some formal process that gives them the authority to have that meeting in that space, whether it's by the library director or the, the, someone in charge of the building at the staff or by this board.
Yeah, so I, I think I'd like to make a motion in absence of a, of a library director to make that, you know, call. I'd like to make a motion to allow the Friends of the Grafton Public Library to have the annual meeting in the historic Wheelock Reading Room at six-thirty on June the seventh, we said, right?
Yes.
And that's during non-public hours.
It is, yes, because it starts at six-thirty, which is after the, on Friday.
Second.
And I would, I would just add that it's in lieu of the fact that the community room is not available. Yep.
Yes.
So motion made and seconded by John. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I declare the motion carried.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you for.
But thank you for bringing that up. I do think that once Tom's on board, it would be good to review that, that room rental policy because there have been some questions in the past.
I agree, and I think there's some other things that we might want to change.
Yep, okay.
Would relate to that.
Okay.
So before we move from, from the Friends.
Yep.
So one thing that we had done often, which was a really great way for the Friends to get to know the board and for the board to get to know the Friends group, so if you're not familiar with the Friends of the Grafton Public Library, they're the fundraising arm of the library. We as trustees aren't allowed to do that sort of fundraising, but the Friend, the Friends kind of spearhead that for us, and they, they raise money through book sales and other things like the Easter egg hunt. And then that money can be used for, to buy passes that the community can use. That's, that's a big thing that they, they give five to ten thousand dollars sometimes for, for passes.
Typically, it's ten thousand dollars a year, and then over many years, the, the Friends accumulated a hundred thousand dollars and made a donation via our capital campaign to, you know, at the time of the library building expansion, so.
Yeah, yeah, so one of the things that Carrie's doing on behalf of the Board of Trustees is attending the Friends meetings. So as an opportunity, other trustees can go in her stead or with her, as long as they don't have a quorum, you know, to attend the meetings to, to kind of broker that relationship. And I really enjoyed, you know, going to those meetings and getting to know them, and I think they also enjoyed getting to know me as well.
Absolutely.
So I would, you know, encourage you to, to attend at least one of their meetings, you know, on occasion.
And most libraries have a Friends organization, and it's encouraged, it's one of the sort of, the hallmarks of, of libraries is having a Friends organization, and the two are, you know, very in close contact with each other.
Yeah, and I would really strongly encourage everybody who is able to, to attend the annual meeting. It's very much appreciated and, you know, showing the support for the Friends. Again, it's, you know, it's not, it'll be, the first thirty minutes will be kind of like just, you know, kind of mingling and light snacks, then it's just a very quick, you know, kind of, you know, what did we do over the past year, and, you know, that kind of thing.
I'll, I'll be there.
Now, is that SafeServe or?
I hope to be there, too.
Is it SafeServe?
No, in other words, it's for the, the other policy about food.
The food.
We just can't bring in food, right, by anyone? It has to be done in a certain way, just for consistency.
I think they followed, they've been doing.
They've been doing this for years, but it's a good question to, I think it's a good question to confirm with the board, with the Friends.
All right.
And I know we, if we're.
There will not be wine. There's no, like, because it was too, it's, unfortunately, it's just too costly to, to get the insurance rider waiver, so, yeah.
I lost my train of thought. Oh.
Oh, do we need to public?
That's what I was going to ask. Do we need to post a meeting agenda if we're attending as a, not in the capacity as a trustee, but as a friend, member of the Friends?
Correct. So we're all, we should all be members of the Friends organization as part of our annual membership.
Yep.
I would encourage you also.
If there's, if there's anything open to the public at which we're in attendance and could speak either, you know, collectively or in a serial fashion regarding library matters, it, it, it's always a safe idea, just like the national light out, just to post an agenda to say, board, yeah, board, board of trustees attendance at Friends.
They don't do that. We have to do that. So that's why, so I actually, I think earlier in the meeting, I did ask, or actually I emailed you, Roger, and I asked about that, posting that.
So it's open to the public, right?
Absolutely. Well, it's open to, all, all members of the Friends are.
Oh, I already wrote this down. Sorry, we did talk about this. I said post agenda for.
No, but is any member of the public open?
They'll hit you up for dues if you do, but you, there's like, they're not expensive dues.
No, my point, my point is that if we are there as a quorum and we're agreeing that we need to post it, that means that any public meeting is open to the public without fee or restriction or, or having to sign up. In other words, our mere presence as a quorum in posting it makes it technically open to the public. In other words, we can't reach, but if, if the four, if four of us are and we post it, it can't be in a private inaccessible to the public setting. In other words, it has to be open to anyone off the street who walks in, just like anyone can walk into this meeting.
Keep it under three, then.
If you keep it under four and it's just three.
I think that's just awful.
No, no, but in other words.
We want the trustees to come and, and, you know.
No, you can't have.
But I don't understand why we can't go, post the agenda, sorry, post the agenda, go, and then anyone in the public can attend because it's a Friends meeting.
I would be shocked if they don't let anyone in. I don't think, I don't think there's going to be a great drive to get there.
No, but I'm saying would anyone be turned away?
I don't know why they would be. Why would they be turned away?
You're supposed to be a member.
Oh, you have to be a member when you go in there.
But it's also a good way to get new members. I don't think it'd be a big deal.
Yep.
And I don't know if you can, you, you, I, I'm sensing that you're feeling stuck between a rock and a hard place because you can't speak on behalf of the Friends right now.
I mean, I'm not on the board anymore.
Right, right.
So, I, I mean, I can't say, I mean, it's not like it's a fancy event that we're, you know, like charging, like, you know, the Friends are charging a lot of money. It's, it's the, it's the annual meeting of the Friends.
Right.
I'm, I'm just curious, I guess, what other.
I just don't see, we're not attending as a board though. We're attending as a Friends member. It's like the same thing if we all went to a basketball game, right? We're not attending as.
No, but we, we.
Or graduation.
But there's, if there's the likelihood that we might be discussing a library matters and that's the reason why the Friends is, in other words, is necessarily library-related at a library, for us to say that, you know, it's just incidental participation at some.
Well, why don't we just decline? I mean, we don't have to talk about library stuff. It's the, it's the Friends meeting.
No, but then we would have to be darn careful not, not to. In other words, and, and that would kind of stifle one of the reasons why we're there. In other words, we'd want to participate in library discussions. I'm simply saying.
I, I would say we would just, we should just post the agenda and we can attend and it will just be a public meeting that other people could attend.
It's not really a meeting, but it, it wouldn't be closed. There wouldn't be any qualifications to entry fee or needing to sign up. In other words, it would be open just as this room would be.
Yep.
For this meeting. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
But it's their meeting. We can't open it to the public if they're requiring a fee for members and for, for the people attending to be members.
Right.
I mean, that's, the intention is it's.
Who is, who is?
Go for a few minutes, say hi and then leave and you won't have to worry about it. That's what I'll do.
Was, who else was planning on attending?
I can't attend.
You can or can't?
I can't.
I'm not sure I can either that day.
I, I can go, but I don't need to.
Okay, so there's three. Were you going to attend?
I, I just want to make sure that if, if this, if there's three, no more than three.
Right.
I, it, it's six and one half dozen of another weather on present. I'm simply saying that if there are four, the nature of that meeting, I think, would command us to post, but by posting, we, we would be advertising that it's a public meeting. And, and I think, Carrie, you're saying that it's.
Who's the chair of the Friends? Who's the chair of the Friends?
I'm not going to attend, so you don't have to worry.
Right.
It'll be three people.
She's not going to know about the policy.
I'm not going to attend.
Well, I'm going to just ask her if someone comes that's not a member, what would they do? And if they'd say they'd welcome in because we want them to become a member, then it seems like, it seems like it's a non-issue.
I am a member, I did pay, by the way. Carrie, I looked into that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So then finally, our next Board of Library Trustee meeting is on June twenty-sixth. And I am not available that day because I'm on vacation.
There you go, John.
So if, I don't know if everyone else can make that day. If we want to try to reschedule it, otherwise if it's just me, then John can run that meeting.
I will be out of the country.
What?
I will be out of the country.
I might be not here either. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Do we, so that's, that's two or three of us. Do we want to consider rescheduling that to
Yeah.
a week before or a week after? A week after is July third. Do we want to meet on June nineteenth?
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, you're right.
It's a holiday.
That is a holiday.
Would that, is the library closed on Juneteenth?
I think we need to meet in June because of the new director.
Yes, I, I agree.
Is the twelfth too early?
I think that's too early.
It's ten, it's, it's a week after the start. It would be.
Well, is it a bad thing for us to, what was the matter with that one date we gave? Just because.
Juneteenth.
Is the library open that day?
I don't believe so.
Oh, will this building be open?
I think Juneteenth is a holiday.
Oh, for the municipal holiday?
I think so.
Yep.
I didn't know that.
So is there another day of the week that we should consider, like the twenty-fifth or the twenty-seventh?
Or the eighteenth?
Well, we need to be mindful that, that absent Zoom, there's three rooms available. A and F are fully equipped with TV. G, we'd need to use the owl.
Yep.
Which is fine by me, but, and then we could always use the the library, wait a minute, they're open till only eight, not nine, right? What are the new hours?
Open till eight, yeah.
Alright, and so that, that wouldn't work. That wouldn't work because there's no way we'd have a one-hour-long meeting unless we met earlier.
Can we just figure out?
So June twelfth?
Not too early?
That's two weeks from now. No, one, two, sorry, three weeks from now.
The new director will have been here a little over a week and may be a good opportunity to.
Is that going to give him enough time to prepare and attend?
It's not much time. It's only really a week.
What's wrong? Can't we find a day of the week of, starting the week of?
The twenty-fourth.
The seventeenth. Is there another day that week that we can work out that's not?
Well, or the week of the twenty-fourth. I mean, we normally would meet on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. Is anyone available Tuesday or Thursday, the twenty-fifth or twenty-seventh?
I am. I'm, I'm available Monday through Thursday.
I'm gone that whole weekend, the following.
Yep.
Yeah, I can make both Tuesday and Thursday.
I can make those days, yeah.
I may not be, but don't worry about me.
Okay, so that's still, that's two. Okay, I can check the room possibilities.
Twenty-fourth, right?
The twenty-fourth, well, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-seventh.
I thought you said you're gone the twenty-sixth.
Oh, yeah, I am.
I, I'm confused.
That's, yeah, that's the day we're supposed to be.
I'm sorry.
The twenty-sixth is bad for.
I'm sorry.
Two of us, right? And, and Dana, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, yes. I'm gone that whole week, not just the day.
The whole week, yeah. I was wondering, like, do you just have like something?
So what about the eighteenth or the, or the twentieth, the Tuesday or Thursday, the week before? Yep.
I can do those. Good for me.
Okay, I will, I will check the eighteenth and the twentieth.
Okay.
What days of the week are those?
Tuesday, Thursday. Assuming that the nineteenth, all the town offices are closed.
So the eighteenth and what, Tuesday, the eighteenth or twentieth?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't do the twentieth Lana Del Rey concert for Bank Girls. I'm the chauffeur.
And, sorry, you, you're not available that day or you are?
Eighteenth and twentieth both work.
Okay, so it's just Carrie on the twentieth.
Just the girls going to the concert. I'm, I'm the chauffeur.
Do you get to go on this?
Okay.
Well, no, I'll, I'll be dropping by.
Oh, it's nine oh three. I said nine o'clock. Any other business that we need to discuss? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I thought in honor of Chris being here, we were going till eleven. I could make some stuff up.
He might quit.
So moved. I moved to adjourn.
So moved. Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Who seconded that?
Yeah, would you want to second?
Chris seconded.
Alright, Chris seconded it, alright.
Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.